The order.
Adequate notice that this meeting was provided in accordance to Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
We're gonna have a moment of silent meditation. Biggest thing is, I just wanna make sure everybody gets home safe tonight. We're gonna try to do the meeting quickly, but still get everything in. So just take a moment of silent meditation. Everybody please stand in salute to the flag and pledge allegiance will be by Commissioner Robert Alcino. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Alcino.
Here.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Loes.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Soro.
Here. Before we continue with the meeting, I just wanna make two announcements. One, for the county, we will have a two-hour delay for tomorrow for the safety of our employees. I request all the department heads, division heads, whatever, please contact your employees to let them know. I know it's last minute, but this is the best we can do. It'll get on Facebook also. But I just wanna make sure everybody knows that tomorrow, all the commissioners were on board with this. Not just one person. I asked everybody what they thought, and again, I wanna make sure that the employees of the county are safe. So it'll be a two-hour delay for tomorrow. Second announcement is, due to the snowstorm, the preliminary state development and redevelopment plan meeting scheduled for tomorrow, which is February 12th, has been moved to February 13th, 6:00 PM at the Luciana Center and at the Roman College. So just to let everybody know, so if you wanna be there, again, it's at 6 o'clock. At the time's the same, but instead of tomorrow Wednesday, it'll be Thursday. Okay. What I need to do is have a motion to open up a public comment.
Motion second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, anyone from the public, you can come up and comment on anything, resolutions, news, wherever. If you seem fit, just please state your name and where you're from.
Sandy Acevedo of the Deerfield Township. I had planned to discuss again the need to reinstate the second public comment item on the agenda, but a couple more pressing items came across my email today, so I'd like to address those. I thought I saw a copy of something about a lawsuit with the clerk's office. I guess it's two-part, my question is two-part. Does the lawsuit come from the clerk's county budget or the funds that they've received from fees, et cetera? And second, do we know what the other terms are in the case? I'm not familiar, I'm somewhat familiar with it, but not familiar that there was a lawsuit and whatnot. Second, a concerned citizen emailed me today and said that they made a call to Representative Andrew's office with concerns over the unelected officials being able to access and possibly copy citizens' private information onto hard drives and remove this information from Social Security and Medicare offices. The caller stressed that this uncertainty has many people panicked and the thought of these benefits being interrupted, at the thought of the benefits being interrupted. The screener assured the caller that Representative Andrew would not let this happen. Since this is such an important topic for a lot of Cumberland County residents, and Representative Andrew has helped with many other local issues, such as the South Avenue Culver Veterans Issues, his concerns about green energy along our coastline, and the sewer project in commercial township. I guess they were wondering, could these great concerns about their Social Security information and things like that be passed along in a resolution from this board to Representative Andrew, you know, on behalf of the citizens of Cumberland County? Thank you.
Not yet.
Oh, I was gonna ask the question.
No, we'll do that after, after public comments. But thank you though.
You're welcome.
That was a billion dollars we got today. Good evening, how nasty ritual from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. On Resolution 2025-113, this is a resolution appointing county administrator. This appointment is for three years. It's been said by this board that nobody gets a contract for three years. And personally, I'm asking you to table this resolution. This particular person has only been on the job for less than a year. He's only been intern administrator for a month. The first resolution was he was to be intern administrator until June the 20th. He was in charge of the Department of Public Works when he first came on board last summer. He approached me after a meeting in the lobby. He said, "I wanna come to your property and see what your problem is." He took my name, phone number, and my address. He told me he was going on vacation for two weeks, and he would get ahold of me when he came back. I went home and worked for two weeks to get my property safe enough for him to be on my property without falling through sinkholes or getting ticks all over him. He never showed, he never called. I come to another meeting here, and I asked him, "Why didn't you come?" He said, "I didn't have to because your property is all boggy and soggy." Now, if he can treat me, a taxpayer, like that, how's he gonna treat the rest of the citizens in this county? I think he should remain on probation and see how things work out before you give him a three-year appointment. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public, wish to come up? Seeing none, motion to close, discussion?
Motion.
Discussion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. First, what I'd like to do is, Celeste, I know that you would like to be able to give answers to the lawsuit and what's going on with it.
So, good evening, everyone. There is on the agenda tonight a payment of a lawsuit that was, so there was a, Andy Kim sued all of the county clerks last year in the primary because of the ballot layout. And he won his lawsuit for the Democratic ballot. And then subsequently, the, after the primary, the case went forward, and there was an agreement that all primary ballots, both Democrat and Republican, would be office block layout. He then asked all of the county clerks to pay his legal fees, of which we challenged that because, you know, that's what you do, and we lost. And so every county clerk in the state of New Jersey is paying the legal fees for the Andy Kim ballot challenge. And that's what we're doing tonight. We were supposed to pay it 30 days in October, but we went back and forth with challenges, and so we are finally done, and so it's all responsibility financially. That's it. And the budget that it comes out of is the election budget from last year. The clerk's election budget from last year, primary, legal fees. Any other questions? I, and I gave you also budgets, what the county clerk did in just January this year, the revenues that we generated. So we gave back to the county $219,223.71, and we gave to the state of New Jersey $559,897.90. We, in January, processed 779 passport applications, not only in this office, in the Bridston office, but mostly in our county store, in the Cumberland Mall. And that made, that's a 60% revenue increase from 2024. And I will, I was asked by Commissioner Albrecht to show, as we go on, a comparison. That's not a file I can show you. But our recording fees are also up a third, too. So the office is working hard to generate the income, you know, do the job that we're supposed to do. Any questions?
Director, how much is the clerk's dollars paid in the lawsuit? How much are you paying?
Thirty-two thousand. It's right in the resolution.
In the resolution.
Thirty-two thousand, six hundred and something dollars.
No, in the resolution.
And now a report order.
Okay.
It's a court order, yes, which we tried to avoid, but they came after us, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, the second question about a three-year contract. First of all, the county administrator is a statutory position, is that correct?
That's correct, Director. So NJSA FUIA colon nine dash Q to ask for a statutory sentence, no, term, I'm sorry.
Well, you might not be wrong in that first part there.
Three, four, or five years.
Three, four, or five years, that's correct. So we picked the lower of.
We picked the lowest we could in that quarter, that's correct.
And that's the reason why there's a contract. That, this came up during last year's negotiation with the CCVA, and it's between that and also, I believe, the CFO, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's also statute.
County Council.
County Council, okay.
Three years.
These are done by law, so that's the reason why you have the contracts. And no one else has the contract. That being said, what I'd like to do is now continue with the meeting. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Director. There was the other question that Mrs. Acevedo had about doing a resolution to Andrew that we didn't.
Well, then I, what I would recommend is contact Congressman Andrew and determine what position he's going to take on this. I'd see and speak for the, for him, and I'd really like to know a lot more before I make any kind of resolutions from this board.
Well, Director, wasn't she asking? Hold on, Director, wasn't this assessor asking for us to take a decision?
Yes, and I said I would like to know more from the Congressman to determine whether or not we should have a resolution.
Well, can I make a comment about that? If, if, that, I, I feel that you alluded that somebody made a request or somebody said that. It's what all of us do with this issue. It's kind of vague how you say it. And I, I, on this side, I'm solid because, finally, I'm happy that someone's looking at the waste that's occurred in the federal government over time. And I think there's a clock going on right now, how much money's been saved. It's over $60 billion and more every day. So I, to say that compared to the last administration, Bob's me, that finally, that this administration's actually looked, this is way above our pay grade because it's federal, but it's finally actually doing something to cut the waste and wash it. And to allude that this may happen because this guy may have access, and it's been, it's been argued that he doesn't. And bring it here, other than the guys, and someone complain makes me, insults me. So I just wanna say that, Director, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, would you please?
Resolution 2025-109, resolution authorizing award of non-fair and open contract for software supporting maintenance services for Gov. Zero X, county fusion software for the Cumberland County clerk's office. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-110, resolution appointing member to the county insurance fund commission. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-111, resolution authorizing the appointment of Southern Postal Regional Employee Benefits Fund Commissioners and alternate fund commissioners. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-112, resolution exercising first and final renewal options to renew contracts for the lease of county-owned farm lands located near the Cumberland County Manor, bid number 24-09. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-113, resolution appointing Cumberland County Administrator. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Question, Director, essence, of essence, solicitor, was there, was there any other bid on this way before we redo this request?
Okay, okay, we're going back one, okay? Let's move forward, hold off on that until the very end and then, then address your, because now you're asking a question on something that's not the resolution that we're on here.
Which one are we on right now, though?
Lot thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay, I said, okay.
We can, we can answer the question, but that's, we're finished.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-114, resolution appointing a member to the Cumberland County Utilities Authority. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
You need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Director, just, I heard, please, that finally have, we're back on track that people from the service area would be appointed back to the utility, so where, where did you ask?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-115, resolution authorizing an approving settlement in the litigation matter of Andy Kim et al. versus Ms. Riley in her official capacity as Cumberland County clerk et al., U.S. District Court for the District of New Jersey, case number 3:24-CV-1098-ZNQ-TJV. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Well, just to be very clear, I'm not happy about this for several reasons. But on the advice of our county council, if we don't vote to approve this, we could be facing sanctions. So I'd be correction rate, so yes.
Director Soro.
I echo his remarks, yes.
Resolution 2025-116, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Alcino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Looks like we're gonna review.
The incentive agenda, resolutions.
That's correct.
15729, resolution authorizing.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you had a question.
Did it ask us a point for this, this far away, that all?
I didn't accept the bid, so I wouldn't know that answer, but I can find out for you and make sure you know tomorrow. And I asked, if nobody else asked.
Director, perhaps a bit of time before we start this event, could, could, I would ask you, this board, reconsider the idea, and you as a director, the idea of adding back in the, the public after the motions are made. Very few people made comments in the second part, but it's there, just in case. I like how you broadened the first part, which a lot of people have seen, a lot more things. I, it's actually, I thought it made it grow much better. But there are people that I thought, in the end, if they did have questions, particularly after we made the comments or after we vote, that they, gives them the opportunity to make a comment. I thought that was a, a easy request, in case of transparency, easy. So I just request, Director, I also request that this board consider that, having that second one put back in. Second public comment.
Okay, consider that, go ahead.
Did you get an answer to his first question, if you'd like it now? The third time a charm. They were the only applicant back when it was put out, and this was a renewal under that first application.
Nobody else put it in.
That is accurate.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Detective.
15729, resolution authorizing application to grant funding from the Attorney General's Office for the state this for year, 2025, alternative responses to reduce instances, instances of violence and escalation together, critical incident model grant program. 15808, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for Microsoft licenses for the Cumberland County Department of Information Technology. 15811, resolution authorizing shared services agreement with the City of Noble to provide senior citizen meal assistance. 15812, resolution authorizing agreement with the New Jersey Judiciary, Cumberland, Boston, Salem, Des Moines for the provision of juvenile youth services. 15813, resolution authorizing transfer of conveyance of Cumberland County Sheriff's Office Patrol and Narcotics Detection K9 men's cash to Lieutenant Darrell Myers. 15815, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various youth services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, RFP number 24-10. 15816, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various youth services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council, RFP number 24-10. 15817, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various youth services for Cumberland County Services Advisory Council, RFP number 24-10, through submission. 15818, resolution exercising option to renew contract for providing plumbing repair services to the county of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System, identifier number 181, CC, CCPS, bid number 23-06, through submission. 15819, resolution authorizing approval to submit grant application and execute a grant contract for the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the CR67, the Remar Service Structure Rehabilitation Project. 15820, resolution authorizing and approving additional temporary budget appropriations in amount of $171,530. 15824, resolution approving change order number one and file to contract for specifications for 2023 Local Free Impact Fund Road Program, two, CR650. 15828, resolution authorizing an amendment to the shared services agreement with commercial township for resurfacing of county-owned roadway within commercial township. 15831, resolution authorizing grant application to the FY26 local program, BARTS program of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts. 15832, resolution authorizing grant application to the New Jersey Historical Commission's County Historical Partnership Program. 15740, resolution rejecting all proposals received for preparing the circulation existing conditions report for Cumberland County, RFP number 24-44. 15830, resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for annual support and maintenance services for the Infashare Case Management for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office. 15838, resolution authorizing award of a non-fair and open contract for, for, to provide annual technical maintenance support and enhancements for the D365 proprietary software system for the Cumberland County Division of Social Services, Social Services. 15835, resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of State Division of Elections for the Maryland Voter Education Program Grant. There are resolutions that are pending and not completed, and the directors ask that we just do not read them due to the pending storm, and they are all placeholders.
Any questions?
Director, can we get a, is there anybody getting a report of all the, these software programs that we are on the hook for, we look for, that, that once we buy and they start looking ready, we're, we're on the hook for, from then on out, we're not, we don't fully change. Or we do, if there is a time break, can we get a report how long? Just especially like number 18, social services program, does that there's anything wrong? Or what, we know that we're buying this, how we bought it in the past, how many years we've had it? Are we looking to upgrade? Just like a list of every, probably have that software, is that possible? This one, we, because we're, we're on the hook for the budget from next, you know, whatever amount of use every time we purchase this, so this better be the program they're using for a while, then.
We'll get that out, too, make the best as we can.
Could also, Director, that, I'll read my notes here, the, this is the brief. It's really, it's, on, number six, I didn't have the resolution number. This first, this, United Advisory Group, they inbounded money to screw it out, fund it for the side, went up, you know, a couple of them went up, a lot of, a lot of money. Where are we pulling this money from? Not one particular one, 66% is 20,000, doesn't sound a lot, but can we get an account of what that money's being used for? All they have to say is they have two events that they're funding, but it's supposed to provide outreach to the juveniles, or whatever, to give them experiences. But do we, don't we do that with other areas of our budget that we, I know it comes to the prosecutor's office, but?
Well, I think if we, we contact the department heads, we'll be able to give you more information, you know?
I've asked the question in the past, and it's, now we're increasing it even more. That's, that's why I think important of it, so. Prosecutors on the line. She was, yeah.
Do you want to answer the question?
Yeah, you, you.
I am on the line, but, but this is actually Melissa Niles' area because it deals with the Y-SAC.
Yeah, that's huge service advisory, but.
Well, there's, there's a couple, there's a, well, thank you, sorry about that. There are a couple Y-SAC ones that are increasing, I see what you're, I mean, it's. There are a couple, Y-SAC was increasing, I see one here, I mean, it's, it's 93%, it's $14,000, it's not tons of money, but why all of a sudden is this being increased? It's a seven, eight, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of them, so.
Is this grant funded?
Hi, this is Melissa.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, this is Melissa Nile, Department Head Human Services. So that's a really good question, there are quite a few change orders on the agenda from Y-SAC. And the reason why we're adding money is because the Juvenile Justice Commission has been months behind on schedule approving our upcoming plan. So this funding that's going towards an increase to contracts is actually unallocated funds that we had set aside. So even though it's increasing the budget, it's not additional, we're not adding money to the pot. We're utilizing unspent funds, we're adding it to the pot, so it doesn't go unspent. And the state has been behind schedule with approving our plan, and it just got approved, and that's why, um, so this is almost like an emergency fund, but it really is unallocated funds to add into the grant so that the program can keep valuing.
And is that, is that include additional things you're doing because you have the money? Is there additional activities, like I see Holly City and Family Center, and just that, that's giving them the money they didn't get in the past?
No, no, so it was, so if we add money to the contract, like for example, let's just say Holly City has a level of service, we contracted them to provide services, before and after school services for 100 youth, the additional funds would have to also serve an additional X number of youth, but it's not, it's not blocking the county anymore to add funds to the contract because we already have the funds approved and said it's unallocated money that we're adding into the contract. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
You got it, thank you.
Anything else, clerk? Now, clerk? Okay. Counselor, just...
So while you had a executive session scheduled this evening, and you always do it at the first meeting of the month, it's absolutely possible that you could push that to the next meeting at your pleasure, Director, given the weather outside?
Sometimes it's my, uh, my contention is that if it's not something that's dire pension, pending.
It is not.
Okay, and I'd rather have people get back to, because we would take no action anyway.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'd rather have people be able to get home considering that we had the storm.
Thank you.
And we can be talked about this at the next meeting. Okay? Any questions here? I guess the, I think what we'd be going next is a motion.
Motion, second.
Aye. There you go.